Respecting Vital Signs Poverty in Employment Indicators, item 8.4. To provide summary of research and findings related to employment, youth, and housing for today's meeting. Added as item 4.2 is a delegation request from Tom Cooper, Hamilton Roundtable for Poverty Reduction, respecting vital signs, poverty employment indicators, item 8.4. To address precarious employment, social assistance, and living wage for today's meeting. Added as item 5.1 are the minutes of the Hamilton Veterans Committee dated May 10, 2016. Added as item 8.5 is a report respecting neighborhood action strategy refresh. And added as item 10.1 is a notice of motion from Councilor Marula respecting Ontario Earlyers Town and Family Centers.
Okay, you've heard the motion. We're gonna, we're gonna hold that in the back of our heads. So we're gonna hold that in the back of our heads. Then we go on to declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest? Saying that there's none. We will be required to wait a minute or two. Apologize if interested.
For the delegation?
Uh, not for the delegation, just to, just to pass. We lost, just temporary, lost one for an emergency situation that just popped up. And we now have one. So, may I please have a motion to move by Marula, seconded by Johnson, all those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Excellent. I will wait, uh, Madam Curran is into, I guess we have one now. May I please have any declarations of interest?
I know that's.
Any declarations of interest being done? May I please have approval, a motion to approve the minutes of June 6, 2016. Moved by Marula, seconded by Johnson, all those in favor? Carried. There are now two delegation requests for today's meeting. Item 4.1 Sarah Mayo from the Social Planning and Research Council of Hamilton, respecting vital signs, poverty employment indicators. Provide a summary of research and findings related to employment, youth, and housing. What is the committee's wish respecting item 4.1? Moved by Marula, seconded by Johnson, all those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Would you wish to be opposed? He's, he's just kidding. He's not really opposed. I'd also like to welcome all the summer staff here from S P R C. Welcome. This is, uh, we're off on time to work. Community will, will end up for conversation and discussion as it relates to community emergency service. We certainly appreciate you here. From Hamilton. Yeah, the vast majority and some that are new to Hamilton as well. Well, welcome for those that are new to Hamilton and welcome that are those that are from Hamilton. Now that you're in Hamilton, there's no distinction. So that's done now. We have also item 4.2, Tom Cooper and the Hamilton Roundtable for Poverty Reduction, respecting vital signs, poverty and employment indicators, item 8.4. To address precarious employment, social assistance, and living wage. What is the committee's wish? Moved by Johnson, seconded by Far, all those in favor? Carried. Excellent. Consent items, 5.1, Hamilton Veterans Committee minutes from the May 10, 2016 meeting. Motion to... Carried. Public hearings and delegations. Now it's time to hear a delegation of Brian Sidley, Executive Director of Hamilton East Kiwanis Nonprofit Homes, respecting a proposal to leverage section 95 properties to create new affordable housing. Brian, would you please come forward? Welcome, Brian.
Good afternoon, Councilman Agarwal, Members of the Committee. I appreciate the opportunity you've given me to address the committee's second.
We're good.
Okay. My name is Brian Sidley, I'm Executive Director of Hamilton East Kiwanis Nonprofit Homes. Kiwanis Nonis is a registered charitable nonprofit organization that operates about 1,000 units in the city of Hamilton, with the third largest social housing provider in the city. We currently operate about 400 to 500 units in Ward 3, which likely makes us the largest property owner in that ward. We also operate 75 to 100 single-family dwellings in Ward 4. One of your present today is our request to partner with the city of Hamilton to leverage our end-of-operating agreement units to create new affordable housing in the city of Hamilton. A June 2010 report on the status of housing in Hamilton prepared by our friends at the Social Planning and Research Council suggests that there were 14,600 units of social housing in the city of Hamilton, housing about 30,000 Hamiltonians. I suggest this figure is indirect and does not reflect the current reality of social housing in Hamilton. The impact of expired operating agreements does not commence next year with Kiwanis Homes. Agreements have already expired with many social housing providers since that report was written. The actual number of social housing units in Hamilton today is in fact lower than the 14,600 units reported by S P R C six years ago by a significant amount. We are moving in the wrong direction. Nine months from now, the operating agreements on the first group of Kiwanis Homes units will expire. Over the next five years, this figure will grow to a total of 260 units. Most of these units are single-family dwellings along the proposed LRT corridor. At this moment in time, we do not have a concrete plan or agreement in place outlining how these units will be administered once the operating agreement ends. Any decisions relating to how these units are leveraged will have a significant impact and ramifications obviously on their tenants and also on the neighbors who reside in the surrounding neighborhoods. This includes impacts on property values, neighborhood makeup and culture, gentrification, tenant displacement, R G I waiting lists, the list goes on. So prior to clarify what we are requesting in terms of addressing this issue, I'd first like to clarify what we're not requesting. We're not asking for a policy directive to address the issue of end-of-operating agreements. This is no longer a policy issue. This is a project management issue. Operating agreements will expire. It's inevitable. We're not requesting permission to sell the units. If that was our intention, we would have let the agreements expire and would be transitioning them to the marketplace. It's as simple as that. It's neither our mission nor our inclination to dispose of affordable housing units in Hamilton. Rather, we're hoping to explore options to allow these units to be most effectively leveraged. In my estimation, I presented seven or eight different options for exploration. I could have presented 20 or 30. There's no single perfect solution to this issue, but rather there are multiple solutions that can be implemented in pursuit. We're also not requesting financial support to rehabilitate or operate these units. The end-of-operating agreements on these units removes the legislative barriers to the city of Hamilton and Kiwanis Homes in terms of leveraging these units. They now move from being a liability to an asset. It's time for us to have a concomitant change in our thinking. This isn't about handout. This is about leveraging assets. So what are we asking for? The long-term investment that has gone into these units represents collective dividend for the city of Hamilton, Kiwanis Homes, and our community. We are bringing to the table assets of a value of $50 million. What we're asking from the city of Hamilton is to help develop a plan to give it in in a manner that accommodates the needs of all stakeholders. We believe that a cross-sectoral working group consisting of city of Hamilton housing, planning, and legal services personnel working with nonprofit private sector stakeholders would provide expertise to most effectively manage these assets to larger quarters. To larger quarters together. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Excellent presentation, thank you very much. We do have a speaker's list. We have councilwoman Marula. We have council...
Thank you, Honesty Chairman, and welcome. Thank you for the presentation. And I guess just to expand upon what we're intended, the intent is to simply refer this to staff to develop a plan collectively with you to leverage new present units to expand the, or to decrease, or to sort of expand the area of capacity in acquiring affordable housing.
Okay. Yes, I mean, I think that's in a nutshell. What we have is we have assets that we can leverage either through sale or mortgage. That we want to invest in the development of new houses, right? For the benefit of all of us here, all right? We believe that without the city of Hamilton personnel onboard and actively involved, that's all worth it.
And why is that?
Well, for a number of reasons. We're a small organization. We don't have the internal capacity and expertise to put projects like this together. We also wanted the capacity to analyze what the impacts are going to be to the neighborhoods. Like I said, we are the largest residential owner in Ward 3. You've sold 200 units in that corridor. You're going to impact. We would like to support all the ramifications of that and come up with multiple options to give to this issue.
But my second theme, Mr. Chairman, is to sell 200 units in order to expand your portfolio to provide more than 1,200 units for the 45.
You know, it's funny because that's one option. I think I presented nine different options. When I, when I start talking about community land trust models, when I start talking about first-time home buyers, when I start talking about alternate, you know, affordable home buying is no different than affordable rental, eyes blaze over. I talk about telling selling 200 units, I get the headlines in the front page of the newspaper. We're talking about multiple options here. There's not one solution to this. There are multiple solutions to this. Some of them maybe take the highest-priced units and sell them. Many of them will be keep some of these units or redevelop these units.
So please, Mr. Chairman, there are multiple, there are multiple options, but we've only one goal, and that is to increase capacity.
I think ultimately, if we're not increasing the number of units in this city, we're going in the wrong direction, right? If, if we're, if we're working on the belief that there are 14,600 units in Hamilton and there are actually 13,000, 12,000, we don't know, units, then that's not the right direction to be going. We have an opportunity here to create more housing and not to be asking operating funds. We've got assets here that choose the absence.
So, so that's, the goal is to increase capacity?
Absolutely.
So at the appropriate time, what I'd like to do is refer this to staff to work that because there, there are costs, although not wanting to delay any time with respect to the partnership and what, what capacity we have within our confidence to deal with the work. So, it would be no offense to need to pursue this to staff recommendation to report which then on the move, this is the end of the presentation, and I appreciate your thanks.
Thank you. Excellent. Councilor Far.
Okay, Brian, nice to see you again. Great presentation. Succinct. There's still lots of clarity we need to bring back to you and it sounds like we're gonna work together to do so and in full support of that. You're talking to Kiwanis Kids, you know, last we spoke about and I remember today we're building, started making the investment on Ellis Avenue in Ward 4 and you've grown it to the tune of probably well over $50 million. You made the LRT comment because you know the value along this corridor and the ending values and the growth of the assessment. But more importantly, since the mid-'70s and that first home that was bought, I'm assuming it was somewhere around '75, you've helped so many families. Just incredible effort, third largest provider, as you mentioned, I think, excellent authority in the city. So just well done on that. So I'm, I'm fine. I just want to get clarity. You said nine months, all of those assets are expiring. What was the timeframe that we had to work with?
In, in 2017, the first 39 units come off.
Okay.
Okay. And then over the next, up until 2021, there'll be a total of 260 of ours and our partners, the community homes.
Okay. And am I clear? So was it about 1975? It started with the first house?
Uh, was it sooner? In 1982.
Oh, 1982?
1982, yeah, yeah. And by the way, Councilor Far, I'm a long-term resident of Ward 2 with a long-term support.
Okay. We didn't, well, we got that on the record.
I guess it definitely stood interest.
I'm not gonna lose my teeth. I'm true. That's all I need to do.
That door it goes in there. Yeah, some scale.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I have a couple of questions. Can you explain to me why you can't at this point, or can you sell any of the assets?
Okay. We have approximately 1,000 units. Of that number, about 260 or so are covered under the old Canadian mortgage and housing operating agreements. The remaining 750 are administered through Provincial Housing Services Act. The Housing Services Act units, we have 750, we're essentially custodian. We have, we manage them, we can't leverage them, we can't do anything because there are funding implications that go with that. With the 260 CMHC units, we were essentially in the same situation until the operating agreements expired. Once the operating agreements expire, funding relationships also expire. At that point in time, those units can be leveraged, right? So the 750 HSA, this is a political decision that we will have to rely on, you know, our provincial counterparts and municipal counterparts to, to help us through some of the problems with that. These other units are in a different situation. It's a different funding agreement.
You can then sell those units?
Yes.
Okay. But you're coming to us to have, to support that decision? Or are you asking us to somehow lobby the government to, to alter the current arrangement of the other, you know?
I'm here to say that this is an opportunity for partnership and that Kiwanis Homes is not leveraged. Those 260 units, not a single cent was invested by Kiwanis Homes board member, Kiwanis Homes staff to pay for those units. Those units were paid for by the taxpayers of the city of Hamilton and the province of Ontario. We want to use those units as dividend for the city as part of a partnership. We feel that it's best to do that to build, use that asset to build new houses, okay? Not-for-profit housing, right? We're not interested in running mortgage units. We're not interested in building market, market apartments. What we're interested in doing is taking that asset and creating new affordable housing. This is an opportunity for both of us. The problem that we have is we're an organization of 20 staff. I do not have planners. I do not have project managers. And I do not have legal staff onboard. The city of Hamilton does, right? So what we're saying is that if we treat this as a collective asset, then we can work together to develop a plan.
Do you, through the chair, do you have any, can you quantify the impact in terms of growth from either sale or leveraging through re-leveraging of those 6260 units? Are you able to come up with a number?
Those 260 units, we've done a real estate analysis on the first 39 of them. They go, will go for an average of $205,000 or so, right? So if you extrapolate that over the 260, we're talking about $50 billion. If we were going to build new units, we would be required to have, maintain about 30% equity or 25% equity in those buildings. Just to make the numbers work. $50,000 at 25% equity in the building is $200 billion. 30%, 30% equity in those buildings, $167 million in investment, okay? When you start putting in, waiving up city developmental charges, when you start adding in potential investment in affordable housing, when you start adding in other, other potential front-end money out there, we're probably talking $100 billion. This is the kind of, this isn't, you know... This is the kind of, this isn't, you know, this is, by taking these assets and properly leverage them, we can make a significant impact on housing in Hamilton. By keeping them exactly the same, we will make no impact on housing in Hamilton.
Through the chair, having toured our facilities and some of your facilities, city-owned and otherwise, and speaking to staff, one of the solutions that was, I would ask them, you know, what is the solution? What do we have to do to address this problem? And I don't know how many times staff said to me, we need to leverage our real estate, we need to have access to free up the money that is being held in the prison mortar, and I'm just wondering, you're talking about 260, but is there, in your opinion, do you think that we should be doing more to see if we can somehow maximize the amount to free up dollars to create more units, or at least maintain?
Well, the, you know, we have just come out of a report from Toronto Community Housing, the Mayor's Testers Report on TCH, that we had a lot of recommendations. One of the recommendations, you know, the issue of leveraging assets, we can leverage assets, problem is managing the debt. You can't, you can't take out a mortgage and not be able to pay for the endless cost, you know, ultimately. The way you do that is create new revenue streams. So, Toronto Community Housing says in the Toronto market that they can make it if they have 30% RGI and 70% RGI and 30% market, that they will be completely self-sufficient and will have no maintenance backlog. That's in Toronto. In Peel, Peel, their system is 40% RGI, 60% market, they're completely sustainable. Hamilton, we're 80% RGI, 20% market, and we have a ton, I mean, not the City of Housing Hamilton, not Coonass Homes, there's a ton of maintenance backlog. So, it's that difference in creating different revenue streams. You can't, I did not know when it became appropriate to set up projects and expect them to work. They're blowing them up in the States. We should not be having 100% liquidity in our communities. You need multiple revenue streams to make communities sustainable. Taking poor people and putting them into a single area doesn't work, and it is difficult.
Through the chair, so, am I hearing then that, and I want to go back to the question I said, that is the actual value of the assets, leveraging the value of the assets, how significant is that, being able to free that up to address an ongoing need for housing for affordable housing?
Now, I don't see if I can understand the question you're asking. You're saying that if we can take...
Sorry, if I may rephrase it. Right now, our assets, your hands are tied, right? You don't have access to, you can't spread out any of the money that's set up in the assets. If that was freed up, how significant is that in terms of being able to address the ongoing need to pay for, to fund housing in the city?
As I said, that leveraging the asset is a confident, you still have to pay it, ultimately, you have to pay that mortgage back. The only way to pay the mortgage is develop a new revenue stream. In housing, the way to develop revenue streams is have some units at market rate, right? So, what I would suggest is that if you have a combination of affordable and market, and the proportion in Hamilton is probably something like 60/40, that works, you put that in place, you won't be talking about maintenance backlogs.
Thank you.
If I could, ask the Chair, Counsel Johnson?
Absolutely.
Please go ahead, Counsel. And pass this presentation, certainly demonstrated an in-depth understanding of your organization, its capacity, your impact on awarding, I appreciate that. And I would also like to comment on how prudent it is to be here nine months in advance. Oftentimes, it's the case that organizations under capacity, they don't see it until everything happens, and then they're back here and we're in an emergent situation, although we are certainly in an emergent situation right now. But what I've heard you present today is a tremendous opportunity. I just want to commend you for that because at City of Housing Hamilton, I'm the Chair of the Portfolio Committee, and we're facing the same problems. The system is broken. The amount of funding that was provided to providers is not sufficient for capital upgrades, and leaves us in a dire situation. So, what you've presented in terms of the opportunity and being ahead of the curve, particularly as it relates to partnership, which I should add, has been in every single federal government statement, whether it's Minister De Clos, who's responsible, David CPH, Adam Vaughan, Public Secretary, and the list goes on and on and on, that it will be federal, provincial, municipal partnerships along with service tier providers or housing providers, along with private sector, that will make up this federal national housing strategy. So, I feel like you've read the tea leaves law, and I think that this opportunity, once presented to staff and fully understood, could potentially be a model for how other housing providers fit into this equation, particularly as I am hearing, and it's been publicly stated that the feds are interested in working directly with municipalities. And so, I congratulate you on that. And I know Counsel Marula is on this, in his motion, and maybe through the staff at the appropriate time. We have an existing, very robust, 10-year homelessness and housing action plan. It's a $70 million commitment that was, again, underfunded by the province. We haven't reviewed the policy. I feel like in my recollection, somewhere in here, the housing mix that you suggested, all the different opportunities, I think there was nine, right, Cindy?
Yes.
Then in there, we'll find it's policy match already pre-existing in that plan. And so, I'm very interested in seeing this move forward. I'm very interested in staff exploring this option, particularly because what you did so well today is clearly define what you were not here to do, which is you're not here just to simply wholesale sell off, which wouldn't have been the easiest, right? That would have been the easiest, simplest thing for you to do in a small organization, non-for-profit, is take advantage of the real estate market, be a part of the bubble, liquidate assets that are at highest value, and then shift over. But what I heard today is that's not your final conclusion. You want to look through every single possibility to keep people in their communities, which for me, particularly in Ward Three, is so very important. The other thing that I want to acknowledge you for is the mix of housing. If you could just comment on the different types of housing that you have in terms of the size and if it accommodates for families?
Sure. I mean, Coonass Homes in Ward, we have multi-unit apartment buildings, walk-ups, row houses, single-family buildings, and many, many single-family, oh, many single-family buildings. In Ward Seven, we have approximately 300 townhouses, and I believe this has approximately 70 units in Branford, that was a project that were townhouses and stacked apartment buildings, that we took over from a company that was in trouble.
So, certainly you're offering that wide mix. And I say this, it was full understanding of the complexities that we're facing, the same complexity. The municipalities have not been adequately funded to be able to provide affordable social housing, and I say this, the download is just, it's been a disaster. So, I think now with what we have at provincial and federal partners is a great opportunity for projects like your own in conjunction with staff and figure out what that sweet spot is. So, I'm in full support of Counsel Marula's upcoming motion that you're bringing here today. The reality is, in what she said so unbelieve, is that we don't have the answer. I don't know that anybody does right now, but what we do have before us is an opportunity to find what's going to work best for Hamilton, and I applaud you for having our foresight to come out this far in advance and have this conversation. So, thank you, Brian, and after appropriate time, I'll be supporting Counsel Marula's motion.
Great. Thank you for your time.
I'll give you your chair back. I didn't see any indications for further speakers before we begin.
Okay, so, may I please have a motion to receive the presentation, Mr. Sibley? Moved by Counsel Johnson, segmented by Counsel Farr. All those in favor and carried. Excellent.
Counsel Marula? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's come by myself and segmented by Counsel Scally, that to be able to use some non-appropriate impulse to leverage such a 95 property to create new affordable, he referred to that in his report to the order to...
Okay, you've heard the motion before you, and is there any questions on the motion? I do have one question for the staff, if I could ask the Chair back.
Please go ahead.
So, just from a standpoint of timing, we've heard that in nine months this will expire. To you, Mr. Chair, to staff, are we confident that we can, in the next nine months, or at least within that critical time, be able to radically explore the core back and what makes your decision later on moving forward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and council members. Given, I agree, the conversation today and an earlier one that staff had with Mr. Sibley, which was also very helpful, and some other providers, we're confident that we can have the framework for a strategy to look at the situation effectively in that time. A part of what helps is the fact that, although loose is looming, coming along over a period of time.
That was the only question that I have. I'll give you the chair back. So, you've heard the motion. Are there any other speakers to the motion? All those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Sibley, for coming before us today. We will now have, we'll now hear the delegation of Sarah Mayo, the Social Planning and Research Council of Hamilton, respecting vital science, poverty, employment indicators, and a key point for to provide a summary of research findings related to employment, youth, and housing.
Thank you. Thank you very much. If it's okay, both of us are sharing the presentation together. Tom Cooper, I'll do the first part. So, Vital Science is a Hamilton Community Foundation publication. In 2015, they commissioned the Social Planning Council to examine Hamilton's economy more closely, and so both of us will be presenting above the highlights. So, it's true, what's been said in the media a lot about Hamilton's economy, that the city's unemployment rate has improved quite a bit and is lower than Toronto and Ontario. We're going the same as the region of Waterloo, and our unemployment rate, though, is still higher than Burlington and Grimsby. I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. If you have questions about the data, I'm happy to answer them. Stats Canada, but we've looked a bit more, we've looked a bit more closely at youth. Stats Canada has said that part-time employment for teens is linked to later life outcomes such as higher income, better fitting jobs, and better career networks. So, employment rates in general are a better measure of economic health in the labor market than unemployment rates. And so, if we look at unemployment, unemployment rates by age, we show that there's a larger proportion of older residents in Hamilton are working than the previous decades. Prime working age population employment has been relatively steady after recovering from the 1990s recession. In contrast, Hamilton's youngest workers, ages 15 to 24, had a big drop in their labor market experience, with only an average of 57% working in 2015 compared to 68% in 1987. Excuse me. As Norwegians, this is Canada, teen employment is linked to higher incomes later in life. There's a very high density of teenagers living in the lower city, and many of these neighborhoods have very high property rates as well. But the large number of teen jobs are mainly in malls, which are mainly on the mountain and suburbs. So, we see that in the map. The dark colors are the highest density. So, moving on to housing, this is a quote from someone in our report, "Housing is basically not a luxury, but unfortunately, in Hamilton, housing is becoming a bridge for many people." Lowest-income tenants in Hamilton pay the highest proportion of their household income on rent. About 69% of the poorest 20% of people in our city pay, they pay about 69% of their income on rent. And the largest rent increases are in the smallest, lowest-priced units. So, bachelor apartments since 2007 have seen a 28% increase in rental prices compared to a 12% increase in three-bedroom units. And there are also many landlords in Hamilton that are currently using predatory practices to remove low-income tenants, such as offering mortgages if they move out, or renovating larger apartments into smaller units to evict low-income families. Exacerbating the rental situation is that we've lost about 1,000 primary rental market units since 2004, in large part due to condo conversions. Here, we see the dark color is Hamilton with a decrease, a net decrease in primary market rental units, whereas there's been an increase in Waterloo and a slow increase in Toronto and Ontario. This is increasing competition among renters and leading to higher rents. And so, rent increases in Hamilton have been higher than in other communities. In 2014, 2015, on the right part of the graph, we see that the rent increase was, on average, 4.1% in the primary rental market, which is more than double the 1.6% increase from the rental guideline increase from the province. Tom Cooper, could come and speak about social assistance?
Thanks, Sarah. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Counsel. Through you, the challenges Hamiltonians are facing has really created a perfect storm, I think, for families on social assistance as well. At the same time, we have seen rents increasing across the community, as Sarah has outlined. We know those living on social assistance, forced to rely on the only income security program available, have not seen an improvement in their situation by and large. Over the last number of years, social assistance caseloads has remained higher than at pre-recession levels. We know for fact that low-income people, those living in poverty in Hamilton, were the first to be impacted by the economic meltdown of 2008. And as we can see from this graph and other indicators, they are the last to see any sort of benefit from an economic recovery. And so, it's been challenging, certainly on a number of levels. People on social assistance, as you all know, are living in some of the deepest poverty in society, and as a result, they're not able to escape that cycle. And we haven't seen any real reform of social assistance at the provincial level in a generation. There is some hope now. An announcement last week that there might be some movement by the provincial government. They've just announced a new task force to look at income security in the province, including social assistance. But we've also heard this song before, certainly with the Social Assistance Commission that was in existence about five years ago, led by Frank Zlank and Dr. Munir Cheek, and many of those recommendations have not been moved forward. As well, we know precarious employment creates untold anxieties among workers in Hamilton and across the GTA. The challenge really is most gravely felt here in Hamilton, and we know Hamilton has a higher rate of insecure unemployment than the GTA average, 57% here compared to 51% in the rest of the GTA. Insecure workers face both lower benefits and greater demands on their time. And so, many workers working in Hamilton are forced to try to balance multiple part-time jobs to make ends meet, and often those are at low wages without benefits such as dental or prescription drugs. The other huge issue facing workers, particularly in the retail and service sector, is family obligations because they simply don't know how many hours they're going to get from one week to the next. So, there are policy solutions, and Sarah's going to talk about some of those now.
A researcher in Toronto called Tom Sisus talks about how we can't turn back the clock. This is the labor market we have, but we can react to it in a better way. We can shape policies that allow people to, that allow the labor market to better serve our economic and social goals. So, the Fatsland's report has a detailed analysis of policies from a number of Canadian link tanks, and they can be summarized in three main recommendations that they have. Increase access to experiences and opportunities, especially for children in middle class, excuse me for the typo there. Modernization of Canada's Social Safety Net and Employment Support Programs, including childcare and affordable housing to reflect a changing labor market, and improvement in labor, in employment conditions and access to labor market information. And so, improvement in employment... And so improvement in employment conditions would include living wage jobs. And in September, the city of Hamilton will be invited to become a living wage champion.
Thanks, Sarah. And just on the point of living wages, I believe council's intimately familiar with the ongoing living wage initiative that's been led by the Hamilton Roundtable for Poverty Reduction, Social Planning Council, Workforce Training Hamilton, Workforce Planning Hamilton, as well as the McMaster Community Poverty Initiative. But over the last couple of years, we've had numerous organizations step up, say no to low-wage work, yes to living wages. We're now over 30 here in Hamilton. And we really love to see a greater number of organizations in the private sector, in the nonprofit sector, as well as public sector organizations step up. Because we have seen this movement grow right across the country, right across the province. And it's been led by and large from here in Hamilton. And we've seen now 29 communities across the province that have their own living wage initiatives. More than 100 employers have stepped up. And we're getting calls from more and more employers right around the province, wanting to learn more about how they can implement this living wage too. So we're looking forward to that report in September and an ongoing conversation on the benefits of living wage.
Thank you.
Excellent. So we do have Counselor Farrar and Counselor Johnson on the speakers list. Which kind of speakers list?
Thank you, Sarah. These two are not in any way married or associated in that capacity. But they work well together. And they did call it a good thing, with respect to what they were wearing today. That shirt, calm, not. First, long form census. How popular are you, Sarah?
I'm very happy that the long form census has been, as we stated. I hope everyone who got one filled it out and returned it. If not, Stats Canada will be at your door and finding you. And if you don't, so please do so.
Why is that important to you in the SPRC?
We've been stymied around, certainly around poverty rates has been a difficult thing. Stats Canada has specifically said that we cannot compare incomes and poverty rates from the 2011 National Household Survey to the previous census data because of the change in methodology. So 2016 will be the first time where we'll really be able to get a more detailed picture of poverty and health than we have since the 2006 data.
I'm glad you have the detail. And I hope the numbers are things that we can deal with when we do get from the SPRC. Tom, through you, Chair. And just on that last bit. So you're saying in September, our city staff will be working on community services. And you're now, through you, preparing for that presentation?
Yes, we are. Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, councillor, we're looking forward to the conversation. Certainly, Hamilton's played a leading role in helping to initiate the living wage movement. And certainly, the city leadership, I think, has been very supportive. So we're looking forward to that report.
And through you, Chair, we'll focus on positives. Some may argue affordability, but reality is, it's something you and I talked over the years now. As it turns out, is that there's very good reason to contemplate the wage and primarily for the economic benefit.
Absolutely. Through you, Mr. Chair, councillor, living wage is a win-win-win. It's a win for those employees who are being lifted out of poverty. We have found through countless examples, not only here in Canada, but in the US and the United Kingdom, living wage is also a win for employers, because they see increased productivity. You see reduced absenteeism, less sick time. And when workers feel valued, they feel part of an organization that values them. I think the most important piece of the living wage movement is really the benefits to community. Because when workers are earning more, that is extra money that's spent locally in the community on goods and services. It's spent at other local businesses that helps create jobs, drive economic growth, and quite frankly, create a healthier community.
Through you, Sarah, the slide on the teens and where they work. You said, well, stay in malls. And it's very telling. And I like that you referenced transit. And I believe we have a council that's very focused on transit as a whole. And that we're focusing on what we need to do to fix what we have and make it better for all of our citizens. Can you just expand on what you've shared, through the Chair, on why you mentioned transit as it relates to where teens work?
Through the Chair. So this graph is, like I said, the colors are the density of, so the number of teenagers per kilometer squared. So we see that there's a band of high-density teenagers that actually live along the LRT line. So that will certainly be helpful to them. But we also know, it's not on this graph, but you've seen maps of poverty in Hamilton. And we know that those areas are also the areas with the highest poverty in Hamilton. And then the circles are where teenagers currently work. And they correspond in large part to major malls in Hamilton. So we see Lightbridge is the big circle on the mountain. Metallands, the circle is a bit off, but it's just because of the shape of that census tract. But that's the Metallands Mall, are two of the major ones. And we know that teenagers work mainly in retail. Sometimes not in malls, but it's in major employment. Their largest employer is retail. And so we've had the suburbanization of retail in Hamilton, right? We've moved from a downtown-oriented retail strip to more suburban, which has happened in cities across Canada. But teenagers continue to live in the lower city. And so the furthest access to jobs that have to travel the furthest to their jobs because of the suburbanization of retail jobs in Hamilton.
There's a strong argument for supporting greater transit. Final question through you, Chair, for either of our presenters or meeting staff. Do you feel, Chair, one of the answers you know our current rental vacancy rate in Hamilton percent?
We will be getting the, the CMHC is to be increasing the quality of its data, which is going to be really great, starting, I think we'll be getting that data in December. And so they're going to be reduced, but they're going to reduce the number of times. They usually do two surveys. They're going to do one better survey. The last vacancy rate data, the vacancy rate actually went up a little bit since what's been published in Vital Signs, because this publication dates from last year. And so more recent data that kind of came out, I think, in December, showed the vacancy rate was closer to 3%. I think it went down to 1.8%, which is what we published in the Vital Signs. And so that could be that, you know, people are scared of the rental market right now. They're like, whoa, it's way too expensive. I'm going to continue. And we know, anecdotally, and we know through other surveys in other cities, that when rental prices go through the roof, people share accommodations more. So people will continue to live with their parents for a much longer time. We know that people will have overcrowded conditions and live two families together or multiple roommates and have health conditions that can accompany overcrowded conditions. And we also know that people leave the community. We know that people have left to St. Catherine's, to rural areas. And so that may be contributing to a higher vacancy rate, but that doesn't mean that our problems are solved. The housing market is really still, you know, even though the vacancy rate went down, the prices of rentals kept increasing.
We have Counselor Johnson. I do have to say, though, I do appreciate, Tom Cooper, that you didn't comment on Counselor Farrar's shorts. Thank you, Counselor Johnson.
I have shorts.
Close your shirt.
Oh, does that have shorts?
No.
I haven't seen them.
Point of order, because I have a point of order. Oh, sorry, Counselor Johnson. So we have Counselor Johnson, followed by Skelly, followed by Jackson. And I'll reserve myself for the last.
Thanks very much. Picking up a question about housing. For Sarah and Bortum, what are specific elements you're hoping to see in the federal housing strategy you are about to receive? And to ask that question a bit differently, are there particular areas of concern you have? You would particularly like to see certain things, not excluding, if that makes any sense? Please provide some feedback.
So the consultations for the housing strategy have just started this week or last week. And so we don't expect it. It's going to be released in December, from what I understand. And we're, along with many community partners, going to be contributing to that consultation. So we don't have a fully formed sort of expectation, list of expectations. But certainly, funding is number one on the list in terms of exactly what you heard. Certainly, the federal government came back as a partner in the development and redevelopment of social housing that would solve a lot of the problems that we're currently facing. I think communities are always looking for more flexibility in the way that funding is, and to be more relevant to local decision-making and not sort of top-down as much as it used to be. And so in terms of federal government, that's the main things. There's lots of other technical things, but I think those would be the main ones.
Thanks very much. Tom, you heard, when you were speaking, Senator Langen's work from 2012, regarding best next steps for tweaking and reforming the range of Ontario's social services to both find efficiencies and better address the needs of low-income people. In terms of OW, which is Ontario Works, which is one of the areas of provincial anti-poverty work in which the municipality has a big role. What were the key Senator Langen recommendations that have been marginalized or not implemented? Why is that report still relevant? Just talk more about those findings. What we should know.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Councillor, there were some important efficiencies, I think, created following that commission. But I think the biggest gap has certainly been in social assistance rates. And one of the things Commissioner Slank and Sheik recommended to the government was an evidence-based approach to setting social assistance rates. And unfortunately, that is really the biggest piece that is keeping people on Ontario Works and on the Ontario Disability Support Program in deep poverty. Rates haven't been reformed since the Miterres days, where they certainly fell significantly. But even during the tenure of this current government, rates have fallen back below the cost of living increases, simply because there have been the high enough increases to maintain the standard of living as woefully inadequate as it is for those families on social assistance. So we're hopeful. There's bills currently in front of the legislature, Bill 185, which will go to committee this fall, passed second reading unanimously in April, that will look at an evidence-based approach to setting social assistance rates, which I believe would be a tremendous and significant change for families living in the deepest poverty. Having said that, this current government has made some important concessions, I think, to families on social assistance, particularly families on social assistance. Most recently, announcing that they would not claw back the Canada Child Benefit. And that Canada Child Benefit, I don't think I could undervalue the importance of that national child benefits impact on low-income families, because it will have a significant benefit. Unfortunately, for singles on Ontario Works, for individuals on the Ontario Disability Support Program, they won't be seeing the same type of benefits coming forward to them. So again, I think an evidence-based approach looking at how much it costs to rent in Hamilton, how much it costs to get enough healthy food to eat, being able to move around your community so you can have a little bit of social inclusion, but also be able to do a job search, be able to afford a telephone. So a potential. Most of those things are impossible right now for families, for individuals on social assistance.
Thanks very much. Since you quickly mentioned food, two points. Our Board of Health will be hearing a detailed plan that our Board of Health will be this kind of August about Hamilton's food strategy. I would appreciate both of your organizations to be back about the implications of the food strategy for poverty friends. What we should be, how we should be analyzing that greatly, with the needs of low-income families. So please keep us posted. Also related to food, could you please go to the final slide here? Very appropriate word on the food. One of those beautiful words is cake and loaf. So I appreciate it a lot here. Cake and loaf.
Oh, yeah.
Two beautiful words. And when you put them together, the capital C and the capital B, you get a wonderful business, which is a bakery and lender, which is now one of five finalists for the Tele-Slovene Small Business National Awards. Years ago. The significance of this, I would state, is that cake and loaf is a sustainable business. So there's definitely, even if you don't accept the argument that says you can make more money by paying a fair wage and by being sustainable, at the very least, you can be competitive and bring in lots of customers and money and be one of the five finalists in this major national underversion contest. And there's an online component. So I don't want to misstate what the online component is, but there is some element, some weighted component of the evaluation that's online. So please go to the internet, search for it, Google, cake and loaf, it's all over social media, and participate in that online support component. It's valuable, valuable to the business. Final, final thing. And Counselor Farrar, shall I briefly? The transit component of our discussion of poverty fighting in Hamilton. I don't think I'm jumping the gun, because they're mostly complete. Counselor Farr is joining me these days. He's celebrating, we have new bike lanes, traveling boards, one and two. Not quite fully complete. I jumped the gun slightly last week. I received word from a source which shall remain unnamed, that they were complete. They are not complete yet. There's little bits and pieces that are not yet complete. However, we are anticipating completion next week. Every bit of the continuous bike lanes. Charlton, between James and Dunham. So for those who want to get to jobs or enjoy the beauty of summer on bike, it would be easier to do that with one and two coming up. Thank you very much, Farah. Thank you for the building.
This reminds me of you, you had a council, you were announced.
Right, sorry. Good for us.
Any birthdays you want to add in there?
So thank you to both of you, a beautiful summer. Congratulations to our interns from SGRC. Thank you for contributing to us.
Counselor Jackson.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. And Sarah, Tom, we're lucky to have advocates like you in our community, I've said that often, and will continue to say that. Thank you for the work and the research you do to help us shape policy and advocacy, both locally within the municipal levy as well as within levels of government. This slide here, I've always said consistently, I worry about living wage, especially when it comes to the small business sector. I have many times responded to surveys that both public and private sector employers, Mr. Chairman, eventually leading to a question to Tom, fully would expect, hope that large employers would be well above the living wage, that would be the absolute minimum, and it's still around the $14.95, $15.00 area. Mid-range employers, Mr. Chairman, maybe in the 50 to 100 range of employees, pretty well, I would sign off as well, that hopefully they would be there. But as a former small business owner, who had a couple managers, full-time system managers, and employed nine people income, that may just help to provide some extra enjoyments through the month than otherwise a full income, looking after all the household bills, bills put in, I worry. And I just, I'm not there yet imposing a living wage on the small business sector. I look at this chart, and I count the rest of the local play, public sector, charitable, not-for-profit organizations, City Hamilton, very proud of our living wage and beyond. I think most school boards, and all, hospital sector, healthcare, we're doing fine. So, Mr. Chairman, long preamble, through you to Tom and Sarah. Now maybe just a comment, as a whole conversation, every involved with the small business sector, to understand both their needs, wants, and as a former small business owner, what consternations they may be providing in return, although in theory they'd love to be there, but I don't want to see small businesses closing because of imposing potentially a living wage. Mr. Chairman, through you to Tom or Sarah.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I think the first point is that a living wage is voluntary. That's how it differs from a minimum wage standard. Living wage does set a different standard. It asks employers to look at the well-being of employees and understand that currently there are 30,000 people in this community who go to work every single day and aren't earning a living wage themselves, or families in poverty. So they are the working force. Living wage is really a progressive movement that seeks to benefit both employees and employers. We've found in our conversations with small business owners, with medium-sized business owners, that there is a strong business case to be made for living wage. I'll use cake and loaf as an example, as it was mentioned. So cake and loaf, the bakery sector is typically a low-paid sector, but the owners there felt it was important that their 12 employees were brought up to a level that met their needs in terms of meeting not only the amount of money they needed to rent and to buy food and to get to their work, but also to participate a little bit in communities. So they raised all of their staff up to $15. As a result, and I'm sure Counselor Johnson can attest to this, every time I walk into cake and loaf, it's packed, they have seen incredible uptake as a result of becoming a living wage employer. There's a certain value put in my consumers, shopping at places that pay their employees' a living wage. Is there a value, knowing that the person at the other end of the counter is able to go home and purchase medication, for example, for a sick child? And that's a value statement. But we've seen, you know, not only here in Canada, but 2,500 living wage employers in the United Kingdom, we had the program manager for the Living Wage Foundation in the UK here a few months ago, talking about their experience of adopted living wage policies. And again, this isn't something we're compelling business owners to do, but it's more of a challenge, we're inviting them to sign on. And we really think it will improve not only their bottom line, but certainly the community as well.
So Tom, thank you for the explanation answer. So beyond what you've put up here, is this the width and breadth of the organizations locally that are paying staff a living wage, Mr. Chairman, through you? Or this was just a sample survey, if you will, there's hundreds more in another study? Through you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. These are our current living wage champions. We are amongst this group there, 13 private sector businesses. There are more than 100 across the province, but this is a fairly new movement. And so we're signing up more and more each week. I've had living wage employers from across the province contacting me about how they sign up in their own communities. It's really been interesting to watch. And we do have a number of small business champions who I would certainly love to invite to counsel, to committee, when this issue comes up in September, and they can talk about their own rationale for implementing a living wage in their business.
I'm just curious, Tom, that cake and loaf, and wonderful, and again, the living wage, noble, very noble objective. It's an incentive, if you will, it's an inspiration, a motivation. I understand all that. I've said before at this table, I just, I see cake and loaf, and I'm wondering, well, there's hundreds, if not thousands, of small businesses that must be in that employment bracket, of 10, a dozen, 15 employees, and I will see a moment. So I just, my intuition tells me, Mr. Chairman, that there might be some consternation in the small business community, as much as they'd like to be there, but there may also be some negative impacts. And the last thing I want is something that society is saying should be there, and it's almost, if you will, an unofficial punitive, that you're not there, and somewhat to stink on. And I hate for that to lead to potential small businesses deciding to close, because they just couldn't meet the noble objective of a living wage. So I set my mind for it, it's not obligatory, it's not like minimum wage, it's not like, I guess, the recent pursuit of income that are underway as well. But anyways, I would have been more excited to see many more small businesses up on that chart. I see the Hamilton Chamber, which is umbrella, I don't see Flannery Chamber, I don't see Stoner Creek Chamber, but just maybe further thoughts to take under advisement for further conversations down the road. Thank you for your email. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
We have Counselor Skelly, followed by Counselor Marula, which is now the first time speaker. I will put myself away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom, the living wage does not apply to students, correct?
There's ongoing discussions about students. Typically, through you, Mr. Chair, sorry, Counselor Skelly. Typically, students is enabling small businesses, small organizations that have a fewer number of employees to have up to 20% of their employees as students, and 10% of larger organizations to have their employees as students, without necessarily having to pay a living wage. That's been a typical living wage policy in other communities. We're still having ongoing conversations, but for us, I think the philosophy behind is, if there's a training aspect for the students, then an organization may not necessarily need to pay a living wage. Some, however, and for example, employees, 500, more than 500 people in the community, there are certainly a number of students, they've decided voluntarily to pay their students a living wage. Not all organizations are able to do that. For example, the school board does not pay a full living wage, although they do pay their students higher than in other sectors.
Through the show, I just wanted to point out that what my concern is, the companies other than the cake and loaf, and I guess, the other one there, but companies you're referencing, even not-for-profits or funded, government-funded, so I'm just wondering, through the private sector, how receptive they are to something like this. My concern would be that you would get a larger company that would simply say, I will pay a living wage, but watch me people out of the way off. And that would be my concern. If it would be a publicity, you know, they're not going to make a big splash to get publicity, they'll go for it, but you'll see a decline in the number of jobs.
Through you, Mr. Chair. That is a concern I've heard. The experience has been out, though. For example, there's some really interesting data coming forth from Water Liberation, which also has a fairly robust living wage campaign. And for those private sector employers that have adopted living wage, they've actually increased their workforce since implementing living wage. We found in example after example, that there are efficiencies to be made when living wage is adopted, certainly increase productivity, lower turnover. The best example I've seen is actually from the United States, and it's a Harvard Business School review of Costco in the US versus Sam's Club, which is an arm of Walmart. Costco in the States does pay a living wage to all their employees, Walmart does not, of course. And what they saw is, as a result of that implementation of living wage, Costco had used turnover, dropped 18% in the first year and 6% annually after that, whereas Walmart had over 50% turnover of its employees annually. And as a result, they saw increased productivity, so that Costco has actually helped pace in Walmart, Sam's Club in profitability.
That's interesting.
I can certainly provide that study.
No, it's good to know. I think it's really, I think there are a lot of government programs, people are probably not aware, especially small, private sector, small business, that they could be taking advantage of to at least hire inexperienced staff, and a number that have been quite successful. A comment perhaps more than a question, and that is on the, where are young people, where students are working? And this is, more often when we cite, we discuss around the table, issues surrounding transit, it seems to be us versus them, now versus the lower city folk. And I think it's really important to recognize that those jobs are hard to get to if you don't have access to a bus, and even the bus service that's downtown to the middle land. So when we are discussing it, I just, you know, I think it's important to recognize that we have a number of people who do rely on public transit. And it may not be the sexiest thing, but it's the way to get from point A to point B, and we need to get there. And it's about getting them there as quickly as possible, and getting them to the jobs that do exist.
We have Counselor Marula, followed by myself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And many thanks to Senator Tom. Just getting back to that list that Counselor Jackson referred to, he has hundreds of employers in Hamilton that provide a living wage. Not living wage is $14.95, that's a note, so just for the public record, I think it's important, I think it's important that we recognize that this list are those that have come forward to use, to be part of this campaign, and not representative of City Hamilton, and being the only ones that are committed to doing so. And I'm wondering, if you, Mr. Chairman, if we could perhaps, not only emphasize that today, but if, from a public perspective, I have some sort of study conducted to determine exactly how many employers fall into that category, if it hasn't been done already. So through you, Mr. Chairman, had that been done at this point, how the resource goes in terms? Or does it, there must be a way to, there must be a way to human resources development can, I guess they'll call that, I don't know, they call it services can, but there's a way of finding, is that we're not even doing it both, you could apply it?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I believe that is certainly possible. Of course, Brian Hamilton's looked at some cursory numbers through our own living wage initiative. We've been working with MacMastion Living Wage Employers and Employees, and really looking at the impact. We hope to have that report available for you in September. But we would certainly value any opportunity to find a little more data on living wage employers in the community. The challenge is, of course, that this is one of many initiatives we're working on, quite a bit of organizational effort to go to the employers, talk to them about living wage. But you're absolutely right, there are probably hundreds, if not thousands, of employers in this community who are already paying a living wage. We'd love them to come forward to us. We can be found at our living wage website, livingwagehamilton.ca, and certainly would love to have a conversation about that signing up.
And perhaps to simplify it, through you, Mr. Chairman, I'm almost certain that if you were to go through the services can, that we could provide that intervention to all the corporate entities within the region, and what the average wage would be for government. Having worked for interdiction one time, I think they're full of a lot of data, and a lot of other methods, for a level, but having said that, that leads me to the next point, in that when the living wage campaign, has there been any attempt to try to provide incentives, through tax incentives, to corporate entities, to provide, even on a pilot basis, a living wage to test how much it would impact on any one of my three?
Through you, Mr. Chair. That is a very good point, and I'm not aware of any in Canada that have taken place. There are certainly policy implications that could potentially reduce living wages as well. And so looking at the recent implementation of candidate child benefit, that will have an impact on, potentially looking at other policy initiatives, such as the National Heart Care Program, could have an impact on living wage as well. So taking policy initiatives hand-in-hand with other tax incentives, I think would be something we'd very much be in support of looking into.
At the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move a motion. It's nothing similar to what the federal government did in the 90s, related to people with disabilities. And what they did, that's they created a program, and they had the opportunity to run it. And as a result of a significant amount of people with disabilities not entering the workforce, they provided an incentive through a subsidy to employers to provide at least an opportunity to determine how actual able they are, rather than perceived disabled. And as a result, was very successful in taking people off the public, either disability programs or other publicly funded programs into the workforce. This, I think, would play a significant role if the federal provincial government were to be engaging, providing incentives, and maybe these types of programs were more long-term, rather than precarious, and would actually either pay on food banks, other social programs, which would pay for itself in the long run. So at the appropriate time, I will move that accordingly, just that we ask the other federal provincial government, being that this is very progressive, that they use a progressive form of taxation, to actually create a program accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to counsel, I'm the first one on the first-time speakers list, and thinking that maybe I should go first next time, because with all these great questions, come more comments and ideas. The first thing I'd like to say is that I have a big transaction to sexy, and I used it to get to my job when I was a student. The second piece being, is that we did have a slide on teen unemployment, and the impacts that it has on the middle-income ladder. I guess what I most challenge about the conversation around the living wage and the rates of students, is somehow this idea that students are less adults. And I think it's important that members around this table and members in the public recognize the cost of education. I can't, like, it's probably a thousand times more than when past generations went to school and could get a part-time job at the FASCO, pay for your tuition, your books, your housing, and come out with $4,000, $5,000. That is not the case nowadays. So the fact that we enter into conversations where somehow students deserve less, if anything, based on data that we have here, we need to identify that students' costs are, in fact, should probably be ahead of more, given their increased costs. But when we're looking at this information, and why the data is so important, through you, Mr. Chair, the reason why I lifted this from counsel, and have it come back to this committee, is because it's very important for us as a municipality to make our decisions based on evidence and data. And so with vital science coming out, and now having this report back, what ways do you think that we can, as municipalities, use this data to track how our own services, projects, and programs are impacting this, or perhaps potentially missing the mark in some ways? Well, actually, do you want me to leave that for staff?
Thank you.
I don't want to put you in that situation. But I will say this, and this is just, in your experience, Sarah, or Tom, did you come across any municipalities, can you go back to the heat map, which I found pretty interesting? Again, when we get this information at this committee, I'm always looking for ways that we can practically apply this to policies, practices, and procedures that we do at the municipality, to have impacts and outcomes on these challenges. So we see where there's some high levels of concentration, it's very familiar, it happens in my board, are there any municipalities that have undertaken an equitable summer student hiring practice that takes into account, in some regards, lower-income neighborhoods or aboriginal neighborhoods, geographically and/or based on income?
I have not heard that specifically. I do know that the federal summer career programs, as I said, I think, they target some communities such as Aboriginal youth, so some communities that do face higher unemployment rates, so that would be certainly something that might make sense for City Hamilton to be an indicator on and push as up. And while Toronto just did, I guess, recently, last week, they announced a program in priority neighborhoods with higher poverty rates to target summer jobs in those neighborhoods.
Reason why?
The neighborhood strategy has done some related activities to that as well here.
Very anecdotally and without any data, I'll make the following statement, that has been my observation, I'm not clear, driving around when I see our summer students, that there is an equity or diversity policy in regards to our municipal hiring practices. So it is something that I'll be looking for, at least information back, I know we did an audit just recently with our department, and I'd like to maybe have a lens of priority neighborhoods and/or income, and/or geography, being able to work in the communities that we live in, and therefore take away some of the transit questions that we might have. Again, we do have that lever as a municipality in the way that we hire, and I think it's something that's worth exploring. The last thing that I want to ask about is Bill, the review 185, is that Paul Miller's bill, is that right? What are you hoping for out of those outcomes? Are they just going to state the obvious, restate what happened in the past, or is it a framework for making these decisions based on what's current versus what was prior to six years ago?
Yeah, Counselor Green, absolutely, through you, Mr. Chair. It is absolutely a framework that not only has the opportunity, I think, to look at evidence-based social assistance and recommend to the government what such a social assistance rate should be in various regions across the province, I think it's also a perfect framework for basic income as well. Because right now, social assistance rates are really just based on the whim of government deciding what they should be. There's no evidence-based approach to saying how much a family of four should receive in social assistance benefits in Hamilton versus Thunder Day, in Windsor versus Ottawa. And so this bill creates an arms-length process, which I think is the other key point. We've had governments in the past that have snapped their fingers in slash social assistance rates, we've had more recent governments that have decided to incrementally increase them, but not reflect the cost of living. I think if we have an arms-length process that takes determination of social assistance out of the hands of politicians, and really puts it into an objective body, similar to how MPPs might have their salaries recognized, I think that would be an important step forward. be an important step forward. Certainly, only governments can decide actual financial decisions on what rate should be, but if you have an objective body, they present the evidence, I think it makes a compelling case.
So in 2009, when the, or sorry, 2012, the social assistance reviews, I attended, I think it was over at Convention Center, how out of date were the rates then? What are we looking at now? Are we 10 years behind?
We are.
Our report specifically looked at that, I don't have that slide here unfortunately, but in your package you will see it, and there's about a 25% gap between the cost of living and the increases to social assistance.
And so based on this policy, based on the flat rate across the province, could it be argued through you, Mr. Chair, that this is aiming and accelerating a hyper-gentrification of areas like Toronto and others, now potentially even here in Hamilton, by basically pushing people up just on that avenue alone?
Yes, displacement is definitely occurring, and certainly, social housing is a hugely important bulge word against displacement, so Toronto has a large number of social housing units and so can protect more of its caseload from increases in rates for those that are in the private market. In fact, you have a presentation about housing allowances to help people in the private market as well, social assistance, so that is an important step, and the city itself took an increasing budget for that, so that's a helpful step for sure.
Okay, thank you very much, and again, I appreciate you guys coming to present and the work beyond going, wanting to the work they're doing. I'm hopeful that as we get more data, Mr. Chair, that we, as a department, be able to focus and hone our own decisions based on evidence and empirical data to be able to make the best choices. So at this time, I guess I'll take the chair back. There is a second time speaker, councillor Farr, and we do have a motion by councillor Marua.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For this and your advocacy, your quiet conversations, you alluded to one recently, you and I spent a weekend at Winnipeg FCN, and you had a very exclusive audience for some hours with MP Adam Bond, and I know you carry forth a big crowd and banner, and talked about some of the things we've already taken on today, and did so in a very eloquent way, I personally was lost on a very sexy Winnipeg transit night all along. No, take care of evening, I'm sorry I missed it, but I knew we were in good hands that evening, and I appreciate that. I have a motion as well, but I also received the presentation, my question is just one and it's for staff.
Okay. We have a motion received by councillor Farr, seconded by councillor Marua, all those in favor, Kerry, Tom, Sarah, thank you so much for coming back and presenting. Do we have, we have item 8.4, which is a, which is a present issue. Matt McClure?
There's a staff report.
Would it make sense perhaps to bump that staff report up and deal with this altogether? Moved by Marua, seconded by Farr, that means bump up item 8.4, if that's possible for here, I don't know if it would be a gentle bump.
Through you, Mr. Chair, there is a report back. That report that is here in 8.4 was jointly prepared by Suzanne Brown and Jason Thorne, and was presented, and I think it brought back here so that we could have, it didn't get much discussion. So you asked that we brought here, so Sarah could provide some, turn to some of those numbers, and I think that was, you know, an important thing to do. So there is nothing on 8.4 except for to refer back, so that we can hear more details of this.
Perfect, yeah, and I think, so we will, yes, we've done that, we'll go item 8.4, we'll receive it, motion received, moved by Skelly, seconded by Farr, all those in favor, Kerry, we now have motion, we do have a question from staff, we can do that for staff?
On 8.4.
On the one we just received?
Yeah.
It's my fault, councillor Farr?
You know what, I think my motion won't, I can speak to it during the motion.
You're so, you're so kind.
Please let councillor Marua continue.
Thank you, councillor Farr, I appreciate your discretion. Councillor Marua?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This move by myself, seconded by councillor Skelly, where a living wage provide, try a sustainable employment policy, whereas stable employment increases the amount of social services now, and by extension, is seen as a common tactic, therefore, we result the city Hamilton requests a title, and provincial government covers incentive for employers as a pilot to assess, it wasn't, the impact on any employer participating.
Excellent. Moved by yourself, seconded by Skelly, any questions? Councillor Jackson?
Show through to the mover, is that specifically targeting the small business sector or small and mid-large size sector hall?
Thank you. We've heard the motion as presented, it's a petition to request government for some support offsetting the living wage. All those in favor? Kerry, excellent, we now have councillor Farr.
Yeah, and so this speaks to what councillor Marua initially was speaking about. I had a question, I was going to suggest that Tom and Sarah pick a couple of those planning interns and send them out for the summer knocking on all the businesses' doors and ask them to major state day, and certainly, I'm sure we could find hundreds and hundreds, maybe even the thousands of current living wage companies out there, and councillor Marua, so rightly, with his past experience prior to being elected official, spoke to avenues in which we could gather that information, and so I was expecting maybe he would move a motion, but that's fine, if you don't mind, I would want my asking staff to report back in September, when we have our report on, that was referenced with SPRC today, on living wage, an approximate number of Hamilton-based businesses and companies that are already currently offer living wage. And before I officially move that, I don't even have a second here, I would like to ask staff if they find that to be in between numbers.
Matt McClure for you, sorry, Steph. To you. Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I've had many conversations with Neil Leveson about gathering that information, and he tells me he can't get it, that employers refuse to release that information. I've asked him, could I have it in a general sense, just if global numbers, their average salary, living wage, and apparently not that employers are not willing to release that information? And that's what, that's what I've been told by Neil, so it's not, we don't have that information for our report, because we wouldn't, I've been advised that they, we can't get it. So I, when I was in planning economic development, I actually asked if we could do that as part of the ambassador program or welcoming employers, or when we're out visiting our employers every year, and I was advised that they will not get it, and Glenn Martin has told me that.
Okay, so that's to staff from that count of advising, that that's what they're hearing or that's their advice?
That's what they have been told by employers, is that they will not release that information.
I don't have a secondary, okay, for councillor Marua, I'll stop there, looks like we have some questions.
We have a motion. Just quickly, Peter, take it, I think we've never showed up as an issue they felt we're not needing to look forward in actions as they're being revised now, in areas we might have to see other people be addressed.
So I'm very clear, because I'm the only one in New York where we're doing right now, can you just remind us, actions, are they specific, are they general, are they both? I mean, we look at these action plans, we, all of us who have neighborhoods within our wards that are currently under your neighborhood development office and that have five years ago or less or more devised these booklets, and we can look at them, and we see definitive action plans, but we also see general, Adam would think they're defined as actions, they're called objectives or something else, they plan. So when you're talking about actions, are you talking about 452 specific, like, fix that park and fix that lighting issue? Is it specific capital stuff we're talking about?
Through the chair, so there, we have 452 actions, they're all separate definitive actions, but the actions themselves, some are very specific, some are general, some are capital program related, some are just increasing engagement, for example. So they come in different forms, and the actions that are out there are the ones that were developed when the plan went forward, and most of the neighborhoods this year are relooking at older actions, which will come back through council for endorsement. And as time has changed, as priorities have changed, as interests have changed, and when they see other neighborhoods doing things that they enjoy, they've adopted new actions that could form a part of the plan. So that's what we're going to bring forward at each neighborhood, providing their actions.
Okay, so finally, through you, Chair, five years ago, in one neighborhood, I won't say which, there was 30 people who put together a wonderful document, and 15 people in this room stood up and did a standing reporter vote, and politically, we ratified at council that action plan, that Neighborhood Action Plan, one of the first ones. It was packed galleries, it was GIC, it was a real kumbaya moment, one I'm very proud of still. I haven't seen it, you don't see it a lot in these chambers, and it was early on, very celebrated, they were a development achievement, and council achievement frankly, but for the most part, it was those 30 people that worked very, very hard at making it real. Now, five years later, there's 10 of them left, maybe. So how about those 20 that worked hours and hours and hours in putting together what was this big kumbaya moment, ultimately a ratification amongst us councillors to say yes and approve what all that part worked? How are they part of the conversation five years later? How are their actions that may not have been addressed, that are among 200 and change, that are now being modified by others in the community, and God bless them, they volunteered their time to improve on other things, maybe they moved out of the neighborhood, but how are they being communicated to with respect to those actions that may be changing, that maybe never got accomplished, and how is that being appreciated? That's my final question, I'll listen to the end. Jerry?
Through the chair, the councillor, so the actions themselves were developed at a point in time, and they were developed at a point in time with a group of people that sat around the table at that time. The executives of planning teams do turnover on a yearly basis, or sometimes they remain the same depending on the neighborhood. But the level of priority of the actions often changes with following year, and they find something new to do. So residents come and go, there are actions that they originally had put forward, sometimes come and go, some are actioned on, some sit there waiting in advance until a resident comes forward to actually initiate that process. And you can see that 232 of the 452 are underway, which means that there's 220 or 210 that are sitting there waiting for a resident to take action on. So those actions may not have disappeared. As to the people themselves, in some cases, they are no longer sitting at the planning team, whether involved as a volunteer within the neighborhood, or stationing up the neighborhood or taking on other roles. And I think sometimes we have to be careful with volunteers, that they don't become overburdened and take on too much, and they get burned up, so then they just step away.
But just so, just so very clear and specific, and I'm trying to, are the 30 people five years ago in the neighborhood on reference chain, going to notify that there's a burn or you have?
So through the chair, to the councillor, that's something I'll follow on specifically, but each neighborhood is doing their own consultation and engagement as the community would, and supervises their action plan. Wouldn't let them bring them back if it was just the executive making the decision, we need to buy it from each neighborhood, but I'll follow up on that.
Okay, and I think you, of all people, the councillor, Chair Green, can get where I'm going, we had this, I keep referring to it as a kumbaya moment, one of, it's burned on my brain, it was a really great thing that happened here, and it celebrated this new office of which we funded 2 million, we are seeing more than the amount of rewards I ever would have dreamed of, it's a brilliant program, and I'm very supportive. But I think to turn that moment five years from now, 10 years from now, into a delegation to this committee or any other, saying, hey, I came up with this brilliant idea, you never did anything, you never bothered to tell me, that all those hundreds of hours that me and my group put in to come up with a game-changing neighborhood transformational agenda item is no longer, and it just disappeared, and no one bothered to even thank me for my hours of input. So I'm hopeful that we don't lose that and get any negative publicity in our neighborhood work, because if time lapses, people move on, but we shouldn't lose contact with them when we're making changes. We should advise them and welcome them to be at the table for any, any five-year review or 10-year review or whatever. That's fine, if you'd like, and I'm already seeing it now, so I want to make certain that we don't end up getting the black out.
Also very amazing, are amazing, passionate councillors who will continue to champion the neighborhood action strategies brought forward by the residents. So with that being said, we do have that item, which is 8.5, we have motion to receive it, yes, moved by Skelly, seconded by Marua, all those in favor? Kerry, I do have one quick personal note of thanks, Lisa Westernset and the entire department, you made a trip out to, to, I'm sorry, Julie, my apologies, Julie, I had Westernset though, in my mind, and I just wanted to say thank you for coming out to a awards ceremony in Toronto, very warm, very warm awards night, but I appreciate you for doing that, and also appreciate the staff and the very high note on the welcoming arrival of my son Winston, so just wanted to put that out there, very classy, very much appreciated, we'll have a thanking party out there. May I please have a motion to adjourn, moved by Skelly, seconded by Farr?
Sorry, the president.
Oh, five, and a car, attention.
Just to say hello to them.
So a motion received by Skelly, seconded by Farr, all those in favor? Kerry, motion to adjourn, moved by Farr, seconded by Skelly, all those in favor?